We are.
All right. I'm going to call the meeting to order now that the chaos is done. And first order of business, public audience. Do you have anything, Katie?
No.
Yeah, all right. Just remember, we all do want to hear from you, so email us. Committee reports and BOE communications. So Shannon, you want to kick us off?
Sure. Central, Carrickville, and Tooten Hills would like to thank their PTOs for their efforts in celebrating their teachers and staff for Teacher Appreciation Week. Tooten Hills also celebrated its annual Simsbury Duck Race Week celebration. Henry James hosted an orientation program and toured for all sixth graders. And SHS was voted one of the best U.S.-new, one of the U.S.-new best high schools.
We all knew that. Is that all you have for us?
Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Thank you, Neil. Sharon?
Couple things. One, CADE sent out a survey for board members.
I did see that. I thought I did it.
Did you all get it?
It should be in your Board of Ed emails if you haven't checked.
So if you haven't sent it in, send it in. So for everyone else, I mentioned a couple of board meetings that the Diversity and Inclusion Committee as part of CADE is taking a survey to get some insights on where our Board of Eds are, separate from central office and administration, understanding that a lot of boards are looking at diversity and inclusion. And so one of the conversations that we've had is how can we desire for our boards and our schools to have these discussions if our Boards of Ed elected members haven't done so themselves? And so what we're wanting to do is take a survey to just get a pulse on where boards are across the state. And so it's part of the first part of getting that information, and then there'll be more to come, probably. So that's that.
It's nice that we're being included in the scope of all of that.
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then the second part of that is there's been some discussions around the affinity groups and just to get more information around what's the interest.
Yeah.
So that's that. And then, is there anything else? Nothing else, I think.
Any of your other subcommittees, Equity or Communications or anything else?
Yeah, so, yeah. So Equity Council. So the Equity Council has been actively meeting, and I think Sue will give an update on some of that. And we have, we're, we've been looking at a number of things, and data being one of them, and Sue will share. We're getting to a point in which we're going to want to share a recommendation to the Board for you all to make a recommendation to the administration.
Okay.
So we're getting close to pulling that information together.
Giving us something concrete to look at.
Giving us something concrete to, to look at.
I'm excited.
So that's been really good. But a lot of good discussion has come out of that. Really needy discussion across the council. So that's been really good. And a lot of money have come out of that as well.
I'm glad to hear that it's working.
Yeah, it is.
As we hoped.
Yeah, it really is. It really is. So it's been a, it's been a good, especially last few months. And we've been meeting more frequently, and I think everybody's been okay with that.
Great.
So that's been good, too.
Thank you. Mr. Watson?
I don't think I have anything.
Okay.
I know I don't have anything.
Todd!
I'm good.
You're good. All right. Mr. Sullivan?
Just that we are in a great place with a search for Squadron Line Assistant Principal. We'll do our finalist round on Thursday morning, and we will have a chosen candidate in front of the Board two weeks from tonight, so.
Terrific. Looking forward to that. I'm sure Mrs. Evans is looking forward to it, too.
She is.
Sue?
Just wanted to provide the Board an update relative to graduation and to share some details about that. So it's going to be here before you know it, June 7th at 6:00 PM at the Simsbury Meadows. So we're really excited about that. We have a rain date of the 8th. That's a slight change. It was the 9th, so if people are like, is it really the 8th? It is. That's the rain date now. We had to make a change about that with the Meadows. And we'll be having a meeting with the Simsbury Meadows on May 19th. And at that meeting, determining how many guests will be allowed based upon the mitigation strategies that we're putting in place, and that'll determine how many tickets per family. As soon as those determinations are made, Mr. Petrino will share that information in his listserv to families. So wanted to update you on that. Certainly Sharon gave a great update on Equity Council, so I think we'll be in pretty good shape to fine-tune our recommendations this month, if not definitely next month, and how we put those recommendations into a concise publication that we could potentially share with our families in the community. So more to come on that. And finally, the McGowan Grant Committee met today to overview 12 different proposals. We were very excited. A lot of great energy in the room, so we'll share those updates as those plans and recommendations become finalized.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy?
How's that? Thanks.
Okay. Mr. Curtis?
Just one thing. It's our first get-together since the big referendum date.
Yes.
So really exciting news, obviously, and I just wanted to take a minute, thank members of the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen, who unanimously supported the Latimer Project through the process, and then the community members with a great show of support. I mean, a much larger turnout than we've had in the community since, as you know, in many years.
You!
Supportive on all fronts, and we're lucky to have Jeff with us tonight, and I know in a few minutes he's going to kind of take us through the next steps in the process and show some of the layouts and concepts that we have. So we're thrilled that this is moving forward. Obviously, our first best step in what's a long-term plan, and another example of how our community really comes together to support education. So really excited.
We tried to, you know, craft it as a community decision, and I think that really resonated, and it was overwhelming. We had three times the number of normal voters, and it was really fabulous to see so many people engaged. So well done to everybody who's had a hand in it, from the Facilities Task and Enrollment Group, to Jeff, to Mike, to all of you. I think it was fabulous, and I'm really pleased. So glad we get to put one forward.
Yes.
All right. With that, we are on to recommended actions. So I need approval of the minutes of April 27th.
I'll move to approved minutes.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And just again, with the masks on and the cameras, let's just do the hands, okay? Thanks, everybody. Personnel?
Just one action for tonight. The retirement of a wonderful second-grade teacher at Tooten Hills School, Kathy Harrell, 21 years of service in Simsbury. Kathy is frequently known to ask central office administrators to come read her class, which is always enjoyable. And I will also note that Kathy may have been the teacher that persevered the most this year. Her class actually had the record for three different quarantines.
Oh.
And so Kathy made that adjustment and would teach from three different stints, teaching from home in her last year of teaching while she did that. So she's a, just a very positive force at Tooten Hills, and we wish her all the best in her retirement.
Certainly do. Can I get a motion on that, please?
Move that the Board of Education accept the retirement of Kathryn Harrell effective June 30th, 2021.
Second. Any discussion? With much appreciation, thank you for all you've done, especially this year. Wow. All those in favor? End-of-year fiscal authorizations.
Yeah, that's me. So I can't believe we're at another, closing in on another year-end, but these are the standard authorizations that you do each year. So the first one related to the state and federal grants. Since we're closing out fiscal year '21, we're moving into fiscal year '22, and all of those grants that I present as part of the quarterly have to be reapplied for each year. So this is just authorizing us to go ahead and renew those applications for the upcoming fiscal year. Transfer of funds. So this is so that we can take line items that are overspent and offset them with line items that are underspent. You are not changing the bottom line of the budget. It stays the same. We're just moving the money around so everything zeros out appropriately. The next one is to move the expenditures from the non-lapsing fund to the general fund. As you know, COVID has had quite the impact on us this year. So this is authorizing the $651,000 that's in non-lapsing to go into the general fund to cover our COVID costs. And then the last one is to authorize the superintendent to hire staff during the months of July and August while the Board is not in session.
Okay. We read each one individually?
Yes.
Okay. So we can just bat that around the table, start with Sharon, and everybody take one. Does that work? All right.
So I move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to access the board's agent and union applications for state and federal refunds programs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next.
Transfer of funds. Move that the, move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. That carries. And now the, the next one, Jen?
Move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent for design meeting with the Board of Finance approval to approve any and all expenditures from the non-lapsing fund to the general fund operating fund for COVID-19-related expenditures.
I'll second. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? All right. Motion carries. And Todd?
Okay. I'll move that the superintendent, with the approval of the Board Chairman, be authorized to hire staff for the 2021-22 school year during the period of July and August when the Board is not in session.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Yes.
Are we not in session this July and August?
I was going to ask, are we, we're anticipating to not be in session. So this will cover.
We will have to visit that at our last meeting.
But the anticipation is we'll be back to business as usual, not meeting over the summer.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
That carries. Thank you all very much. Approval of collective bargaining unit between the Simsbury Board of Education and Simsbury School Nurses Association.
This one's me. After the, over the last couple of months, we've engaged with our nurses group. This is a pretty small bargaining unit of 13 members, and I will start my comments by saying, in a year where everybody did heavy lifting due to COVID, certainly school nurses were on the front lines right from the beginning of this, and the negotiations were conducted in a spirit of appreciation for all the work that they have done. Want to thank Sue Lumke, who partnered with me on our side of the table, and the three nurses who represented their group, Patty Warner from Henry James School, Suzanne Sinicori from the high school, and Kristin Dobrowski, who is at Squadron Line, and also the Cobb School part-time, right?
That's correct.
Correct. So we negotiated a three-year agreement through the 2024, June 30th of 2024. The general wage increases, as you can see from the exhibit, were 2.75% in year one, 2.3% in year two, and 2.35% in year three, which is an overall three-year number of 7.4%, which was within the guidance that we had from the Personnel and Negotiations Committee. They will receive step movement, and then they brought some interesting comparisons to other districts of stipends that are given in other local districts to help encourage a pursuit of professional certification. So in particular, our National Board Certification, which is a very rigorous process, and currently none of our nurses have that certification, so this was, this would incentivize them to go get that certification. The nurses had an unusually large number of steps on their schedule. We shrunk that down and renumbered them appropriately, and then made them equal in terms of where they stand with other school year groups in terms of paid holidays and longevity payments. On the insurance side of things, they will move from 18% cost share to 19% over the course of the three years. That is, they were already somewhat higher on that. And those of you who have negotiated with the teachers and administrators know that we have tried to make movement on some of the pharmacy recommendations from Cigna, and in particular in this negotiation, they agreed to implementation of a specialty pharmacy program for very expensive drugs and kind of helps everybody to be enrolled in that program. Some minor adjustments with illness time and paid time off, and then just a clarification on some technical matters, including an agreement that in the future, if, you know, for instance, on snow days, others work remotely, that the nurses would be allowed to work remotely and be paid for those days, too. And we already proven that they can work effectively remotely, so we agreed to that portion of the request. So that's the highlights that I can offer you. Happy to answer any questions, and otherwise the motion is there at the bottom of the exhibit.
Anybody have questions for me, all of us? All right.
I'll move that the Board of Education ratify the proposed changes in the collective bargaining agreement between the Simsbury Board of Education and the Simsbury School Nurses Association for the period July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. With our thanks to the nurses for all they've done, in particular this year, every year.
And I, in particular, would like to add by thanking them, the number of them that volunteered for the entire 10-to-four, six-hour shifts at our vaccination clinics on Saturdays was staggering, and they'll be out there again when we run clinics for the kids. So they, they gave, if I added up the volunteer hours that they gave for our vaccination clinics, it would be pretty astounding.
Yes. I saw many of them there, including some of our retired nurses who came back to.
Oh, yeah. They were there every Saturday.
I was awed by how the participation went in that. That was great. So thanks to all of them. So for the package missing the Latimer exhibit, so that's actually going to stay. Okay. Thank you. All right. So then, Latimer Lane project, project education specifications. Sharon, for you, that's in your, in your book, so it'll be behind you. So you choose a model, and it'll be behind you. Just letting you know. Thank you.
All right. So we are so excited for this presentation tonight. And I'll echo what Matt said, to thank everybody who has supported this project, as we now can talk about it as a reality with our referendum vote. And tonight, thank you to Jeff Wazinski from Tecton, who will, I'm going to be the quarterback who hands off to the running back consistently here tonight, because he's, he's, he's going to take most of the heavy lifting. So obviously, as we've talked about, Latimer Lane was identified by the Board as the first best step. We're going to talk a little bit about what has to happen over the next six weeks to put together a grant application that will need to be into the Office of School Construction Grants Review by June 30th. And then Jeff will talk about the document that you received in your board packet. The most important document really to put together in this process is this educational specifications document, in which you're outlining what it is you want in the project and the thoroughness that you have to attack that exercise. Jeff will show you a, a, a conceived schedule of when, if we, if we aggressively stick to a timeline, how quickly we could be with a construction. The, the budget pieces that you have seen before are becoming more clear. I know that's something the Board of Finance had some questions about. And then the most exciting part is when we're going to be able to look at some conceptual design. So this part right here is really what has to happen over the next six weeks. So I showed this to you at the meeting when we were at Central. It's now becoming more of a reality, and Tecton is supporting our district's effort to get the grant application done. Jason Casey is taking a lead on that. So right now, we're, we're all set at that first third that you see, that Tecton and the school team are working. Obviously, you're familiar with our enrollment projections. I would say number two and four on there, the space standards worksheet and the cost estimates that have to go into the grant application are where Jeff's team is taking the lead, but also, you know, having, we had a great interactive meeting about three or four weeks ago at Latimer Lane where Mike was able to outline his visions, and Jason around technology, and what are we looking for in the project, and, and cost estimates, but also, you know, the, the state standards around square footage, and then a, a site analysis that will be happening in the next couple of weeks. For us, the schools are working with the educational specifications, and that's that document that we're going to talk about tonight, and then you have to approve in two weeks. And the reason you have to approve it in two weeks is because what we really need is the minutes from the next meeting that said you approved, then, for us to be able to submit to the state. We are all set with, because our school safety and security plan was intact and in good shape, we've already received the approval of the, the letter that we need from that office, and then the approval for renovation status is, the application, an electronic application that, again, Jason Casey is taking the lead on. What does the town need to do? The approval of education specs, some certified resolutions. I attended by Zoom last night the Board of Selectmen meeting, and the Board of Selectmen took three votes to continue to move this project forward. Necessary votes for us to be able to apply for the grant, and we're highly supportive of what we're doing. And then I'll, I'll have to work with the town clerk's office to get a certification of the vote total to be able to submit for the grant application. So all of that and much, much more has to happen in the next six weeks in order for us to submit a, a grant application by that, you know, really strict deadline. You don't hit it by June 30th, you're off a whole nother year before you can apply. So we will, we will meet that deadline, so.
You don't anticipate any issues?
No, not at this time. We're in good shape.
Thanks, Neil. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Wazinski, Tecton Architects, for those that don't know me. I'm going to address in very high level what's included in the educational specifications. Neil kind of addressed it, but there's a legal definition as per the state guidelines, but essentially it's a guidebook. It's your playbook. It's everything and everything about the project. So it's kind of your roadmap, if you will, for the project. It's a written narrative for everything that we're going to do to the building, to the site, for all the classrooms, every space in the building. And that, that work started at the initial programming meeting with Michael and a few others. And also included as part of the educational specifications is what's called the program document. And this is a listing of every programmable educational space in the building, so the number of classrooms, number of music rooms, number of art rooms, those kinds of things. Everything's in here. That ties out to all the spreadsheets that you're so familiar with related to total square footage. So the long and short of it is that it's your playbook. The major components in there are, it's a written justification of the educational need. It describes kind of the educational activities, and a lot of the language will be, will be familiar with, you'll be familiar with because it's part of your long-range plan. A lot of the information, the vision, mission, vision, was all kind of collected as a part of the information that was already created. As I mentioned, you know, there's text that describes each and every space in the building. There's a section in the specifications that outlines the type of materials, type of security, protocol that we'll have for the buildings, type of site improvements, so on and so forth. So really, it's, it's your tool to use. It's probably the biggest document that you'll, that's part of the grant application, and you're allowed to revise it once, one, at the end of the project, so if anything changes, you can file for revision. But the intent is to get as much as we possibly can get into this document. And it's important because what the state will do is look at this document for reimbursement and look at items, so if it's not in here, they'll, they'll call those ineligible items. So even if you don't eventually end up getting items in the building that are already in this document, it's better to be safe than sorry, so to speak. All right. So there's, there's 15 different sections. It's about 60 pages, and if you have difficulty sleeping, this may be even happier. But to be serious, the, the pieces that really should be focused in on are the, the educational detailed descriptions of the spaces, to make sure we have it right, what we're doing with the building and the site, and then community uses and, and some of the educational curriculum, which you will, and make sure it marries up with the, with the physical spaces. The schedule isn't really much different. You've seen this diagram before. The star kind of in the, almost in the center, left the center of the slide is where you are today, so you just passed your referendum, you have the June 30th deadline. What happens from the state is you'll hear back from the state, it's called a priority list. They'll put you on a priority list sometime, typically it's December 15th of this year, and then that goes through the whole legislative process, and during the spring, they approve the final grant application, and the money's allowed. On the bottom of this slide, you see what's called pre-construction phase. I believe the intent is to proceed with the design documents during this process, so when you get the authorization from the state in the spring of next year, you could put a shovel, conceivably you could put a shovel on the ground and start. So the construction phase, kind of on the right side of the slide, we show it in, we've always shown it in a conservative fashion, taking basically about two, two years and two summers. In an ideal world, you might be able to shrink that by, you know, eight to 10 months. So if, if you do all these things, you know, in a proper fashion that we're showing through today. So, and that may be important, or will be important, when, when considering things like escalation.
Can I ask, do we know at this point, because I know in some of the discussions around this, we were renovate as new or possible new construction, and the state had some say in that. Do we have a answer on that right now, definitively?
So we don't have a definitive answer. We won't until we file for renovation status. We met with the state, there was a group of us that met with the state on April 23rd out on-site, Neil, Michael, a few others from the facilities, Jason, Andrew, and met with the project manager. We reviewed the information and reviewed our proposal to go for renovate as new status. And all indications are that he'd be very supportive of it, so it was a very positive meeting. Kudos to the, to the district. They were well-prepared with all the documentation that we had to date. So it went, I think, and Neil, you can speak to it, I think it went very well. We still need to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's as far as the renovation status, but there was no obstacles that he saw in order to attain that, that status.
Great.
I will comment that Jeff is deflecting credit to the district team because his preparation, every question that this guy, Bob Sommer, from the state asked for, Jeff had prepared a binder like this, and he would just say, "Tab 6," and it would be there, and tab 4, and it would be there. So it was really incredibly well done, and he left praising the project.
Like praise from the state. So would that be, would that answer come with the priority list in December or not until this spring?
It'll come with the priority list in December, and in an ideal world, we'll get a commitment before that.
Perfect.
So there's a letter that, that the superintendent has to narrate and draft, and then they'll either accept it or reject it, but all indications are that they'll be supportive of the project because there's a series of requirements that we still need to submit, but.
We're in good shape.
It was, it went fairly well, and then. And then we're still.
Thank you.
Sure. So that's the schedule. So there is some some flex in the original schedule. In an ideal world, we obviously, we'd like to consolidate it as much as we can, being safe and secure as far as the type of destruction as well. But to limit the disruption to to the occupants would be a huge win as well to the project. So the budget didn't change, went through referendum, you know, 25703, 175. For the state was projected, the total project cost was a 36.7 million. The table on the left, it changed a little bit from the enrollment projection. So we updated them for the October 2020. But all of this information is consistent with what we've seen in the past. The square footages that you see on this table kind of marry up with the program that you'll see in the detail that that will be submitted. So the conceptual design, we'll walk you through some of the proposed site improvements. What would I like you to think of this as a kind of a test fit, if you will, of all of the educational specs and all the program documents? This is a test fit to make sure that it will work. And we worked with with Michael on the way to understand his vision for for the school and tried to marry that up from a design perspective. So north is to the left on this on this page. And Mountain View Drive is on the bottom. Latimer Lane is on the left, just to give you orientation. So there's a couple of things on the site itself. I think the entry was during the early programming discussions. And even through the existing conditions analysis, there was a bit of a challenge with the separation of bus and and parent. So you'll see this green space, the separate drives now for left. I have a diagram in there. Yellow arrow, dedicated bus drop drop off on the left. There's a separated separation of entries, so it provides a safe entry for the vehicular traffic. On the right side, in the blue, is a dedicated parent drop off. There's a couple of minor things where we aligned some of the entrance and exits with the adjacent roads, just to kind of clean things up from a circulation perspective. A couple of things on this diagram. We've identified the blue box labeled as item one as a secure visitor parking with proper distance according to the school safety and infrastructure guidelines, which you'll have to fill out the need as a part of the grant application. So that distance, you see the dotted arrow and line meets the requirements. And item two is enhanced visibility of the site from the administrative suite. So there's a small entrance that provides some some visibility for the entire site. So you've got better control and surveillance over the entire site. Something that we talked about very early on during our conditions analysis and master plan. The concept of the the next slide here represents the play areas. And in the blue, item one on the on the plan here, there's secure and age appropriate play areas with universal access. Universal access means zero tolerance for ADA accessibility. So it's universal play for everyone. So that's a very important feature. You see three of them, two on the left side of this plan and one on the upper right. So there's three age appropriate play areas. We pulled it away from the from the mountain, the intersection of Mountain View and Latimer and pulled it closer to the building from a safety and security standpoint. And then we obviously left the fields in the back as they are. And then with the addition to the buildings, which is in the top left and on the far right, this created two secure outdoor court guards that can be used for protected play, outdoor learning, a variety of different pieces. And you'll see that in the in the conceptual plan. So moving on to the the conceptual floor plan, working left to right on your screen, the light blue are all of the typical classrooms. And if you're not familiar with the layout, there's a diagram a couple of slides further where it shows the additions. But on the top left of your screen, there's a classroom addition. And on the right side, where it starts with the darker blue and the beige, that's the cafeteria and gymnasium. Those are the two additions to the building. So the idea would be to, similar to what we present in the past, build these first, use that as swing space, and then work your way around the building from a renovation standpoint. Sure?
Where is like the current gym?
So the current gym.
Is it right where the.
Great question. So there was an analysis of the media center, the gym, the cafeteria as it relates to O S C G N R state standard for for square footages. And the media center, the gym, and the cafeteria will all undersized for the projected population. So we did shuffle spaces around and tried to make highest and best use of what the building offers today. So yes, the the media center, which is in the center of the floor there, and I don't think the folks at home can see, but in the center where it's that that reddish color and that orange, that's kind of your core spaces, your art, your musics, your medias. So we're trying to create this central core that's shared by all the all the surrounding classrooms. So there could be a lot of activity there. And that space, if you remember from the photos, didn't quite have the height required for like.
I've coached there many times. If I'm getting it, it's almost everything to the right of the old gym or the media center here is kind of new, right?
Yeah, so there's.
You'll see it better.
There's actually one diagram right here. Great question. So the two outlines here in yellow are are the additions to the building. And on the top left, there is a, I think it's a 1992 free classroom addition that either we're going to tear down and remove and rebuild that top left corner or kind of reshape using the existing structure that's there. Haven't really got into the detail yet, but the idea is that's where we're going to build more classrooms for 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 the students. And on the right side is basically the caf, gym, kitchen, servery, mechanical. And then on the top of that, there's there's toilets and a stage area. And the reason why we we wanted to place it on that side, at least conceptually for right now, is to take advantage of the existing adjacent parking and the ability to separate the building off for community use. So nighttime use, you don't have to have the stoop, you know, the public traveling through your building. You can kind of easily separate that portion off from the mechanicals.
Hey, Jeff.
Sorry, go ahead.
In in that center corridor, there are the stairs and the ramp?
Yep, so, yeah, so there's a 32-inch changing grade from the main floor to the upper back. And what we, at least conceptually, we're trying to do is show is show a ramp and stair. So we're not relying on any kind of mechanical means and elevator lift or any of that.
So what happens in the corridor on the left?
Sure. That's a very question because it took me a while to figure it out. There's a ramp here that brings you to 32 inches down. There's a ramp and stair here. And then there's a ramp and stair here to bring you down to this level.
Okay.
So so the upper level was a bit strategic in that there's a space back here that's called stage area that's also appropriately sized for another, maybe music or art room in the interim for flexibility. That's actually 32 inch higher than than the gym.
Okay.
So it creates a natural stage platform.
Okay.
And slide doors.
In the in the corridor on the left, the same thing, there's a.
Same thing.
Okay.
There's a ramp that brings you down. So the transitioning grades all happen right there, there. So we have three spots. So we try to keep it, keep it as simple as possible. Yep. Good question.
So I'm just looking.
Sure.
One of the things that stood out was the nurses' access. Now, are we redoing that whole administrative nurse suite as well in this?
Yep, so great question.
There we go.
Great question, made me through. The yellow boxes are are basically the the administrative areas and nurses' suite. And one of the challenges we heard with Michael, and we did hear it throughout some of the program activities during the master planners, is a distribution of some of the work areas. So you'll see the remote number ones in smaller yellow boxes kind of distributed around the building. That is to, the intent there is to try to limit faculty and staff traffic back to the central office so that it can stay closer to the neighborhoods. The admin suite and nurse suite is going to be completely renovated with proper access and control. So the idea that you would have to walk through the principal's office or thereabouts to get to the nurse would be completely reshaped.
Right, because what always struck me was for the number of kids you have at Latimer, I go to, you know, I go back to my squadron days and we had, I think, three beds for the kids to go to when you were one. So it's like that was just.
And you had to walk through everything to get there.
Right, right. So that was just my thought process was.
It'll be reshaped and enlarged, and I'm just looking at the scene. So we have an office waiting area, exam, rest in in pod area, two 100 square foot rooms. So that's basically almost the size of the space beyond for kind of rest and area and pods. Secure storage and a and a media, the adjacent toilet for children.
Great.
So yes, the the idea behind the the term renovate as new or renovate like new, it's kind of used tangibly, is you're saving the bones of the building and the best parts and completely renovating the rest. Because we, at the end of the day, have to sign off saying, your lights are going to last 25 years. Your mechanical is going to last 25 years. So so it will be, we are going to reshape this building, and you'll see it in some of the images.
Jeff, what's the square footage of the the new area on the right, the new construction? Gym?
Ah, that's a good question. So the gym, the gym itself is around 8,000 square feet plus the the dining. So eight and about 5,000. So so it's about, I think it's 16 and change with all the circulation. So it's below the threshold, the state threshold from a renovate as new perspective. So we have to keep an eye on that because you can only renovate, you have to keep 55% of the building. So and so I I think, at least conceptually speaking, it's a good balance to to try to take, you know, leverage the assets of the built, the existing building and try to add to it. The, is that answered?
Yeah.
Yep. The yellow, I'm sorry, the blue boxes on this screen are both distributed and centralized special education. So I think one of the challenges is the the distance from the general classroom. So we wanted to get those out distributed closer to the, we're calling them the classroom neighborhoods. They'll still need to be shaped a little bit. But also have a a central specialized education floor, which is which is kind of shared with the instrument, general music, art. So it's part of your course space. It's it feels it's it's integrated. So it's part of the curriculum, which I think is important. So a couple of views, conceptual renderings, again, very kind of broad brush, but let me go back. So so if you're standing in the parking lot down here where this parking lot exists today, and you're looking at this addition, the gym is here, the cafeteria is here. And we, there are some details in the cafeteria. We want to shape it so that you could, you could save it, kind of have temporary separation for the physical purposes. So that view is kind of if you were standing in the parking lot. On the right side of this image is the gymnasium, which you'll see some clerestory lighting to give you some light and nice, natural daylight in there because it is going to be used for multiple purposes, you know, gym, community use, but also performance with the stage. And then on the on the left to center is the cafeteria issue, which is which is a lot of blazing, well lit, has a canopy as you enter. So that could be another staging area for when the parents drop off. You're not, you have some coverage to wait under. And then you see that we started to develop some, you know, seating area benches and things like that as you enter. Try to help shape it as well.
I will note, if you happen to be on a Zoom meeting with the principal of Latimer Lane, you now see this as the background.
To honor the days of sinsbury travel basketball, wanting your practices at Central School. And not wanting Latimer.
You'll be able to take an actual three pointer now or a free throw.
And then the last view that we have is is a quick interior shot of, again, the the yellow area with the arrows. You're standing just inside the new addition, looking at the cafeteria, looking down the hallway, which would be nurse, admin. And then what you see is what we wanted to try to capture is the idea that you could start to use, or at least visualize, the outdoor, outdoor court guards as as additional educational space, if you will. So so here's the caf. And you can see we tried to create different kind of living rooms, if you will. So there's one here, one here, both served by a servery off to the right. You look down the hall, just to the left is your admin and nurse. But you can see through the glass there, lots of natural daylight, connection to the outdoors, possibilities to use the.
Kids could grow a garden.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes.
Farm to table ideas are very common these days. So that's what we have for an update. There's still a lot to do on the grant application checklist.
Can I ask just one other, the practical side of me? Are we enlarging the parking lots at all? Because it seems like that's got to be a challenge.
So right now, I think you're hovering around 100 spaces, just shy of that. So we did enlarge, modestly enlarge the visitor parking, down, which is what I called down in the front area. And we did reclaim some additional parking along the edge of the travel of the entrance drive. So it's not doubling by any means. It's it is slightly improving the number. There's other strategies we can do when we're out there, like grade stabilization. So if you have events, I know they use the outdoor.
I was going to say, do you use the basketball courts?
Yep. But if you if you have shallow curves in the drive over, you could grade stabilize the the grass underneath for grass base so that so that could call up and that too.
Just thinking all the the number of kids in a grade that as a parent, that's always a challenge. Where you're going to go, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions for Jeff?
One question, just about, like, I know at the beginning you talked a little bit about the out, the perimeter, the outside, like the fields and the playgrounds. Will that look new? Like, will that all like, like new playground? I don't know what the Latimer playground is, but I know how Central is compared to Squadron and those types of things.
Yeah, so the area is that, so the short answer is yes. It's going to be, you know, we're going to address the sidewalks, the pavement, the lighting, the landscaping, the players that we show are new. We'll have to study the the existing playscape now because I think it's relatively, is it new?
I feel like Latimer kids had a big fun when they served for.
Like the the playscape itself, I think, is is somewhere in that, you know, 15 years-ish.
So we we.
But a few pieces on the other side. I mean, we had a piece that literally just finally, we went in officially today, and kids were on it, so.
Over, over a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what we show are, what we tried to show here is three identified age appropriate playscapes. Two, at least two are, remove the budget calls for those. Plus, you kind of see some ideas of some outdoor kind of classroom areas.
And the basketball courts, are those going to be like sinsbury farms nights? Or are they going to be like? I'm just asking the questions that people at home want to know. Where it's like, oh, you've been, I'm bringing an ankle running up and down the court.
How can a building ankle sprain?
We're going to try to add some texture to it, right?
Mike, is there a fence around your playground right now?
There is a, yes, there are fences on both sides.
There is?
Yeah.
Make that right on the back. On my shoulders.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the fence runs the length of Latimer Lane and then around along the front and connects to the building. And then on the the sixth grade wing, there are obviously, you know, gaps where the sidewalks are, but otherwise it it circles that area as well, but not on the wood side.
And then that.
Up on the back of the field, there's nothing.
Yeah, no, nothing up there.
Do you have a courtyard now?
We sort of.
Kind of.
But there's nothing that connects that first grade wing to that third grade wing, so.
Great, remember.
We have elements in the courtyard.
I never wondered, but it was like, when he did the pictures that had what was old and new, it looked as if there would be a courtyard.
Remember that you had to go outside to get to the next one.
Right, yeah, it's a fumble.
I blocked it out. It was so pale, it was all.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. We appreciate your patience and sticking with us through this very long process.
It's kind of a pleasure. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
All right, so now we are on to proposed textbooks, 2122.
It's exciting. Every spring, the board reviews and adopts any new textbooks that will be used in the following school year. So I, we usually introduce the text, give you an opportunity over the course of the next couple of weeks to review it, if you would like to do so through my office. And then it will be back on the agenda for potential approval on our May 25th meeting. So just one text for next year, AP Stat. Here it is. I will keep a copy of this text again in my office if you want to take a look. So I do this, right? Comes to my office, I go. I go, let me. I go, let me take the last chapter review test and see what I remember from my college days, but it
Why don't you get an AP STAT, just saying.
That's it, that's it. So it does align with the new AP Central curriculum, which of course is very important, has some very cool technology integration. It's been reviewed by the teacher, department supervisor, and by me. And again, it's for your review in the next couple of weeks. Certainly you can make those arrangements through my office and I could even pass it around for your perusal this evening.
Anybody want to peruse statistics? All right. Here you go. Okay, so this gets a vote down the road.
On the 25th, yes.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Anybody who's missing statistics has a place to go. All right, and then fee schedule for the use of Simsbury Public School.
Same pattern, this gets a vote in a couple of weeks. This is a document that comes before you every spring about rental fees for our various gymnasiums, auditoriums. Many, many of our groups, our community groups that don't get charged if the building is already open, but if, you know, if it's an event on a weekend, it's more likely to be charged. And if it's, I will also note that we did have to make a decision about the new Henry James Auditorium. So if that is gonna be used by an outside group, it's gonna be charged at the rate that we're using the high school auditorium at. So that is included in this fee schedule. This is a document that's existed for many years and the typical suggestion is a 2% increase to cover costs of custodial wages and things like that. So happy to answer any questions or if I don't know the answer, get an answer to it.
But we don't vote tonight.
We don't vote tonight. This is, this is a
We can reach out to you over the next two weeks if there's anything
Correct, anyone can reach out to me. This was something Kirk was very involved in and Carol Mitchell, our business office manager, handles a lot of these contracts and has lately been moving them through me. We're just starting up again. None of this has been going on during COVID, as you can imagine. So a lot of these requests are just building back up, so.
And the PTO's still don't, for their functions?
They don't get charged, no, no. One of the biggest charges is Sunday schools that we run in, in
Oh, so St. Catherine's uses Henry James.
Yeah, those would be a very notable, like, that's rented out every Sunday morning for CCD class and that is charged.
All right, thank you very much.
All right.
So do I have the ability to circle back because somebody forgot something they might wanted to mention? Is that, am I allowed to circle back to a board member who wants to say something that they forgot at the earlier board of the meeting? I don't want to break any rules. All right. You have something you wanted to address.
I've heard, in the joys of spring
Yes.
For children, I have lost time frame, so I quickly looked and I remembered that we had a curriculum meeting.
Yes.
And one of the things that people asked about was American Sign Language and whether or not. So I just wanted to publicly touch on that or see if you would touch on it to say that, you know, it is a go.
It is a go. I'm happy to give an update and thank you so much because I
I remembered it.
Didn't mention that in my notes, but we, you may recall that we decided to pilot American Sign Language and to place that in the course offerings to ascertain interest. And it's a very good problem that we have. We had enough for two sections. We had budgeted to engage with Proximity Learning, who is a collaborator of, with us relative to Chinese. So we had placed that in the budget. So we are going to offer a section through proximity for our seniors, because there's enough of that, enough of senior interest to do so, and thought that would be a good way to address that need. And then we do have already on our staff, a teacher of the deaf, and she will teach an in-person section to students in grades nine through 11. So certainly interest is there. We want to see how the curriculum goes next year and then we'll be bringing back those results to curriculum.
That's great. That's good news. I'm glad to hear it's a good problem to have.
Yes.
And then I just wanted to touch base and just see if we got any information on the Columbus Day discussion and how we, or how that change might go about if we decided to go that way.
So we're putting information together, Sue and I need to meet and then we'll come back with
So we'll get that on a future agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure we touched on that. With that, our next meeting will be Tuesday, the 25th, Terrifield School Cafeteria. Hope to see you all there. And I will take a motion to move to executive session.
Move.
Okay, so I got a Sharon and I got a Todd.
Sure.
All those in favor? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Glad to learn so much about it.